I see everyone made it healthy and safe through the storm. That's good.
Yeah, we didn't lose power, which was a better thing.
Yeah, isn't that something?
Yeah, the wind was bad.
That's because we spent some, that's why we kept spending more money in the tree, tree, tree item on the town budget.
Tree trimming, right?
That's right.
Well, you know, I believe it's ebbs and flow. I was saying earlier, you know, you will have a storm now with 20 mile an hour winds and 100 residents will lose power. You know, that particular storm, what there were 35, 40 mile an hour winds and no one lost power. So how do you, how do you figure it?
Get out. Okay, are we ready to call the meeting to order?
Yes.
First, I, I would like to say a few things. If it looks like I'm reading off of papers, that's because I am, because I don't want to forget anything I have to say. But with deepest regret, Derek Van Disy has announced his resignation to the Board of Selectman as Town Manager of Upton. Derek has been a driving force for many of the positive changes we see in the town of Upton. He has been a cornerstone of the town and under his leadership has played an instrumental role in the town centered development project, securing a financial future for this town while also improving the bottom line. We cannot forget his contributions to the neighbor to neighbor assistance program, the new community center, which will foster civic infrastructure, allowing the community to flourish, and his longstanding support of the boards and committees volunteers. I would like to recognize Derek and extend my gratitude for his commitment to the town. He has consistently looked for ways to move the town forward in a positive and progressive manner. I would like to wish Derek future success. The town of Upton was fortunate to have had leadership for the past five years and appreciate your efforts to make our town one of the best places to live. On behalf of the town of Upton, we thank you and wish you success in your future endeavors. Thank you, Derek.
Well said.
Very nicely done, Maureen.
If I could just take a few minutes, um, thank you, um, Maureen, thank you, the rest of the board. Um, in my resignation letter, I was, I was sincere when I had said that, you know, this comes with mixed emotions. It was not something that I was seeking. Um, it's just something that for what, for many reasons, just uh, fell in my lap and um, for the reasons that um, I didn't seek this position, but mainly because of all the great things that are happening in Upton. And I said to myself, like, we can't let up now. With the community center and everything we've done over the past five years, I really feel like this town is going in the right trajectory. And I remember Steve and I sitting up in front of um, um, Holy Angels Church five years ago, and him kind of giving me the low down of town, town business. And he asked me, what, you know, so what do I think? And I I turned to him and I says, well, we've been hanging out here for 30 minutes. And the only thing I've seen is cars drive through the center into town. No, there's no reason to stop. So, you know, it was like those types of conversations that, uh, and then talking to people like Paul Flaherty, who've been here for, I want to say 100 years, Paul, but probably a little bit less than that, who
Almost.
Understand the institutional um, whereabouts of what town, the town has done over the years and why they've done it. So, I would say um, generally, like this is a team effort and we've all done well over the last five years. Um, you, the board has pushed me to, to want to do better each and every year, and I appreciate that. So, you know, uh, each one of you have brought a new lens on, on how the town should uh, see itself in years to come. And it was really me just trying to carry out the things that you wanted to see. So, I mean, as much credit as Maureen gave to me tonight, I, you know, I circle it back to, to you all because uh, one, without your vision and without the department and staff support, none of this would have been possible. So, um, I do uh, plan on returning to Upton, uh, if you were happy, whether that's hanging out at the brewery and just catching up or coming to the groundbreaking ceremony. Um, those are all the things that I'm going to miss. And so, um, I appreciate all that you've done for me and giving me the opportunities to serve as a town manager. So, thank you for everything you've done because um, most people say those things because it's the right thing to say, but I say them because it, it's, it comes from my heart. So again, I thank you all.
Thank you, Derek. Can we open up the meeting to public comment? Seeing no public comment. Um, can we discuss the request, request for the lot survey? And this is the parcel um, on Warren Street.
Just a technical nick, do we want to do the minutes or did we pass over that on purpose?
I didn't. Oh, oh God. Here we go.
Sorry.
Well, um, to rescue you, I did not see a ref draft on the minutes, so I would propose that we pass over them till next meeting.
On the January 18th meeting minutes?
Yeah, I didn't, I, for some reason, I did not see those.
They were not sent. They're not completed.
Okay.
Okay. Guest presentations? I see that on the agenda. Do we have guests here? Okay, then we will go to the 5.1, discuss funding request for the lot survey. How much money are we talking for the lot survey, Derek?
Um, so the chairman of the Ecom Development Committee is here this evening, Mr. David Ross.
Is he? Oh, okay.
Detail about this, but just to give you a little bit of background, Paul D., our town planner, has um, I talked to two different survey firms. Uh, one firm gave the town a quote of $10,000. The second firm gave the town a quote of $6,500. Uh, but I want to caveat that and say that that $6,500 quote um, I did, there's a preference with that, that it may be a little bit higher. They didn't have a lot of time to look at the parcel land to give them a solid number. So, they ball popped it at about $6,500. So, um, with that, if David has anything to offer, I'll turn it back to the board.
Okay, Dave?
Yeah, I mean, this is the G A R parcel next to Holy Angels that we discussed.
Oh, that's
Last meeting, like I think the 18th. Um, and we realized the agenda didn't have an official like vote on it. So the EDC was requesting funding from the board's professional and technical assistance account uh, to be able to go out and complete the survey to make it its own lot. So I think the, we were all a little surprised where the figures came in. We thought we, 5,000 would be enough to cover it, but it seems like uh, we're going to need to increase that to a slightly higher number.
So the 6,500 is just an estimate? Yeah.
Yeah, part of the challenge we heard was that the firms were, due to all the snow, unable to come out and really, you know, look at it. Uh, in the $10,000 estimate from the first firm, uh, they said the number could come down if some of the markers are already there. I believe they mean like the, you know, little cement markers uh, that show the plot lines, but we can't verify any of that with two feet of snow on top of it.
No.
And it's not just the survey, it's also drawing up the uh, official A and R report for the planning board. Um, so that we're able to take that to the planning board to get the A and R done.
Any questions, Brett, Steve?
Uh, yes, Maureen, if I may. Um, you know, in my mind, I look at this and obviously we want to include it in the RFP, but in my mind, that request as far as the estimate, what, what the survey companies are looking to, looking to charge us is just exorbitant. Um, I think we need to hold off. You know, I was expecting somewhere around $2,000. I think that was the number that was floating around, 2 to 2,500 bucks. You know, I look at it and I say, you know, realistically, it's a triangle. We're shooting two lines there. Um, so I am not in favor of spending that kind of money to survey that small of a parcel. I, I kind of foresee that as probably a tenth of an acre. Probably what I'm thinking that is going to come in at, because I think the Holy Angels parcel is um, somewhere around point two. But what I would suggest is by all means, we include it in the RFP. If we need to, as a board, if we need to seek approval at town meeting, we ask for approval to, you know, sell or transfer a portion of, as I'm looking at the map, that would be ultimately a portion of parcel 53. And obviously the understanding is it's that very small triangle. That way we really don't have to spend, you know, 65, they're telling us it's going to be more than 6,500. The $10,000 estimate is telling us it's going to be less than 10,000. So I just don't think it makes a lot of sense for us to, you know, spend $7,500, you know, or whatever that number may be, you know, to just basically splinter off that little piece of land. It's got a clear marker divider being the center brook. So I would, you know, just put in the RFP survey to follow. Obviously this parcel is included in the RFP and we can cross that bridge of expending those survey dollars, I think, when it's more favorable market for us. I mean, that, that would be my thoughts.
So actually they can't do anything with the snow here, right?
I mean, that's, that's what I fear is, we, you know, we're probably getting a, you know, an ultra high estimate on this for that matter, that it's snow covered and they're probably not looking for the work.
We got two more storms coming.
So yeah, I think, but I'm sure I wouldn't say that this is pressing, that we don't need it done next week. Uh, the, the hope was to be able to go out, line this up and get it all taken care of before Maytown meeting. So that we had a clearly defined lot at Maytown meeting. Um, I understand what Selectman Matillion is saying, that it is pretty self-evident and visual to explain at town meeting. Um, I don't know if we can get official um, an official vote from town meeting though, on a vague description of the land, right? As opposed to an actual determined approved lot. Um, and one thing we heard about issuing the RFP is the developers want certainty and not a list of contingencies like, oh, trust us, we're going to get this lot broken out and we're going to get this taken care of and that taken care of. So, again, we're not looking to line up the RP until sometime in the summer. Uh, but if we need to get official designation to sell these to transfer that lot at Maytown meeting, that's the impetus for trying to get the ball rolling on the um, on the lot survey. So if you don't want to approve the funding tonight, if you, we could go out and try to solicit official quotes to it, uh, I guess, and come back at a future meeting, maybe early in March, potentially get that done.
I, as one member, would like to do that. Um, Steve and Brett, how do you feel about that?
I, I agree with you, Maureen. I'd feel a lot better if we had a solid number in, in something that's, I, I would consider a little more reasonable than 65 to 7,500. So that, that would be my inclination.
Brett?
Um, just a couple of questions. One is, I know, is to Dave's point is, can we put something in the town, in the warrant for May that would allow us the flexibility to carve off that lot on transfer so that there could be certainty in the RFP? Because I think that that's important. If, if we can do that, great. If we can't, then I think we need to, you know, have potentially think more about having a survey.
So what's the call going to be? We're going to wait until March for the funding?
Um, if I could, just, just to answer Brett's question, so I believe the EDC has already submitted a placeholder article uh, for the, for the Maytime meeting. Uh, you'll see that uh, draft warrant by the end of this week, which you'll see this specific article. Um, so depending on the timeline of the survey itself, um, if it's complete prior to town meeting, you could certainly uh, the, what town meeting members could certainly take a vote on it. Uh, if it's necessarily not complete by town meeting, it would be just something as simple as passing it over uh, that evening.
Okay, so it's not, it's not as though we could have that vote without the specifics of the survey being completed. Is that correct?
Yeah. I think it would be, I think Tom meeting would want to ensure that they know exactly the parcel of land and the uh, acreage that is being voted on. Cause the article would read, um, the, the town would vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to sell lease or transfer um, this parcel of land. And so just knowing time meaning typically they are looking for the details of the specific land in which they're giving authorization to the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, but there's no reason that they need sort of the meets and bounds of uh, where all the lot lines are, right? I mean, I, we, we could show them the thing from Mass GIS and say, here's the parcel, I, I, right?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I, I think generally speaking, we could definitely give them an aerial view of the um, of the area of the space that we're referring to.
Yeah, okay, okay. Cause I think that was, that was the concern is if we're not able to do that, then we definitely would need to have the survey done. Otherwise, I think, you know, it, it makes sense to wait and have the survey done when there's not two feet of snow on the ground. I've got to believe that the reason people are giving us those very high quotes is because of the snow. I, I've got to believe that. Or, or some other market dynamic that we're not aware of because, you know, I've had five acre lots with uh, five or six lot lines surveyed for 1,600, 2,000 bucks. So, someone doesn't, I'm very
Yeah, so just a couple of things that when it comes to serving commercial property, um, it's, it's very different as far as cost versus residential property. And honestly, I don't know why there's a difference in costs. You know, it's to me, surveying land, it should be surveying land, but uh, there's usually a factor of two that um, increases the cost for commercial property. Um, so seeing a core for five, $6,000 doesn't surprise me at all when it comes to commercial property. Uh, but getting back to the question about the article itself, I would just remember typically when we go to town meeting, um, we reference a book and page recorded in the registry of deeds. And if we don't have a survey, this, we won't be able to reference that. So again, I just wonder if Tom meeting would, would find issue with, with not having the exact um, um, survey recorded in the registry books.
I guess the only other thing I would, I would say in that vein is, you know, if, if, if we've got, you know, if it's people's professional opinion that those estimates are sort of within the reasonable ballpark, even if they're a little high, that's, I don't think that's necessarily surprising. Um, then for the amount of money we're talking about and for the importance of getting this RFP put together and not wanting to have a special town meeting for this, I certainly would be a fan of, um, you know, giving authorization to expend, you know, whatever it is, up to $10,000 to do this survey so that we can make sure we have what we need for town meeting. We don't want to block this RFP um, in any way, shape or form at this point. Time, time is of the essence, in my opinion.
If, if I could just offer maybe a compromise, would, would the board want to consider um, appropriating a um, a set number um, and then requiring that I work directly with uh, Paul and, and the EDC on seeking three quotes? And then obviously we go with the lesser amount of the three quotes. Uh, maybe this will help, uh, one, set aside an appropriation and then two, once we get the quotes in, then we can start working on the survey, you know, as soon as the, as the snow clears. And then this wouldn't hold it up by, by any stretch. Um, or would you just prefer we just wait, get the quotes and come back to the, to the board at that point?
Yeah, I, I like that option personally, just as I think it helps avoid us getting into a long protracted discussion over a few thousand dollars for something that's really important for the downtown revitalization. But that's my, my perspective.
So would you like, oh, yes, Steve?
Oh, I was going to say, um, I, I would just assume get the quotes first so that we can have a, a, a real number to work off of and appropriate, you know, the real amount of what it's going to cost. Um, we do have options, you know, if there's some language in the, you know, warrant article that needs to be cleaned up, you know, as a board, we can certainly uh, you know, reopen the warrant to, you know, correct something if there's something missing in that article. Um, that, you know, that would be my thinking. You know, I think, I think either way, no matter which way we go, nobody's going to be surveying that property in the next 30 days. So, if it takes an additional two weeks till our next meeting to get a, again, a real hard steadfast number that we can in clear conscience say that, okay, we, we put forth the correct effort. We have now five quotes and this is the real number that it costs. I'd feel a lot better about that myself.
So could we um, push that out to the next meeting? Is that agreeable?
Yep, that's fine with me.
Brett?
Yeah, that's fine.
I'll take a motion then that we move this to the next, when's the next meeting? Um, February 8th, 15th?
Uh, yeah, today's the first, so it should be the 15th.
So why don't we push this out for the request on the 15th?
Okay.
I'll take a motion to that effect.
Uh, I, do we have to motion that? Or do we just table it? Do we table it to the 15th?
Um, I would make a motion to move it to the 15th.
Okay, I would make a motion that we move the discussion item or the motion for the lot survey, move that to the meeting scheduled for the 15th. Stephen, Mattelia and I?
Brett Simas, aye.
Unanimous action?
And just one, I'm sorry, just one other quick question. Derek, does that give you enough time uh, to procure three solid quotes?
Yeah, we, we have relationships with a lot of surveys in the region, so we'll, we'll reach out, we'll send them the assessors maps, ask them to give me a quote. I, I can tell you though, in the past though, um, it's been really, it's been a real challenge to try to get quotes from surveys, just with some of the previous work we've done over the fall. Um, I mean, I had one survey, it took six weeks to get me a quote. So, we'll do our best. We'll reach out to them tomorrow, um, and try to get those quotes as soon as we can.
Great.
Thank you, Derek. 5.2, motion to file and accept the VFA grant. Have you both had a chance to look at that?
Yes, I have.
Yeah.
Are we good with it?
Yes, it, it looks good to me. Sorry, Brett, go ahead.
No, I was just agreeing, same thing. Yep, looks good to me.
Can we motion to accept the VFA grant?
Yeah, I make a motion that we uh, approve, accept the uh, VFA grants uh, coming from the uh, 2021 Volunteer Fire Assistant Grant Program. Brett Simas, aye.
I would second the motion. Stephen, Mattelia and I?
Unanimous action? 5.3, discuss town manager search process and the timeline. Um, have you both had a chance to look at the draft advertisement?
Yeah.
Steve?
I was not able to open it. There was an attachment on the email, but I wasn't able to open it. So I can, uh, I'll have to try it from a different uh, device that I have here at the house.
So, so does, does the board want me to try to bring it up on um, on share?
Yeah, that would be great if we could.
All right, I'll, I'm going to do my best on this one. Tell me if you can see this.
Yeah.
Yes, that's clear.
Yeah.
So if you want to take a few minutes to, to, to read it, then answer any questions.
Give you a chance to read it, Steve.
You know, I, I've read this in the past, of course, we've, we've posted twice before. So, um, the only thing that right, the only thing that's different is the final paragraph, it looks to be. Yeah, it looks good to me. I mean, if we, if we do see anything um, that we think needs to be, would this be something that um, is a work in progress or is this the final draft? Are you proposing this as the final draft, Derek?
Yes, it would be the final draft, yes.
And if we vote on it tonight, we can get it advertised tomorrow, which would give them till, it would close right around March 1st, March 2nd, correct, Derek?
That's correct, yes, it would. Yep, so it'd be a 30 day advertisement, yep.
And that's pretty standard, right? That seems
30 days is, is the typical time in which they would post a position like this, yes.
Yeah, so I think the sooner we get it out there, the better, just given that we want to give ourselves time to, right, work through getting applications in and then also have a, a search committee, um, you know, review everything and get everything put in place and try to do that in a timely fashion. Yeah, I'm good, I'm good with the timeline and the posting as it is.
And once we have all the applications, um, I would like to get uh, applications out for the search committee, which is, I think will be a five member committee for the special act. And then I, I would like to, and I hope you agree with it, um, add an additional member as a subject member expert. And that could be, an example would be an active town meeting, a manager that had no vote, but had input on uh, certain requirements of town managers.
Well, before um, before we, I guess, before I agree or disagree with that, do we know what the composition of, is there any particular composition to the five member committee? For instance, do we need uh, say a member from the personnel committee, a member from, you know, a, a various committee, or is it just strictly uh, citizens at large?
I would think we'd want a member from the personnel committee. Um,
And this, I think that's something outlined, Derek. What is there, is there a formula for this or is this already determined or do we have?
Yeah, so the special act requires that it's, it says specifically a five member search committee. It doesn't require any specific um, individuals or board or committee members serve on this committee. So I think it's really up to the discretion of board selectmen to decide. Do they want someone from the personnel board to serve this committee? Which I think is, you should consider. I would just add that, you know, maybe not as a five, part of the five member voting committee. Uh, you may want to consider having like, a technical expert, so like a town manager in the region to serve on this committee to provide technical guidance, uh, especially given the fact that you're not going to have, hire, you're not going to be hiring a search firm. Um, that you could have someone to try to help the search committee with thinking through some of the questions and some of the um, required skills, knowledge and abilities that one would expect in this type of position.
Yeah, I think that's the, I think that's a great idea. I think if it's five members, we have some advisor in there that sort of understands the nuance of, of what a town manager's role, responsibilities, et cetera, are. Would help that group. And Steve, to your point, I, I mean, I'm, I'm with you. I assume that, I think we should have somebody from the personnel board and then, I don't know, I guess, are the I think we should have somebody from the personnel board, and then, I don't know, I guess, are the other four seats, just at-large seats, like Steve had suggested. Maureen, or Steve?
I agree with that. I don't think any active employees should serve on the, um, search committee.
Yeah.
Yeah. So no, no town employees?
No, because they're gonna have to work for them, so I don't think that would be the right thing to do.
Yep. I mean, it sounds like a great idea as far as having someone to, you know, for lack of a better term, kind of steer the committee or offer some technical expertise. Um, I guess my, my question or concern is, you know, how are we gonna get, I mean, you would assume you'd, you know, you're not gonna be able to get somebody that lives in Upton with that skill set that's gonna be willing to serve, so now that means we'd have to get somebody from outside of the community. Are they gonna be willing to, you know, volunteer for that post? And then they would, I would assume, be an ad hoc member, they would not have voting privileges.
No, they wouldn't, and, um, there are, there are people that have been on search committees, uh, town managers that have been on search committees that didn't live in the town, that were more than willing to help.
Yeah, that's a great point, Maureen. If I could just jump in real quick, Chief Bradley, um, typically when he does, and I'll talk a little bit about town manager board, when he does, um, a promotion opportunities, he he calls in, you know, a colleague of his to serve as a secondary chief to help him do the, um, the screening process. And so it's very common amongst colleagues to support one another in various searches, so um, I know a number of town managers that I certainly can ask if they'd be willing to serve on this, because and I've done the same for other town managers, so it's, it's a common practice amongst this network.
Okay, so you think you may be able to get at least one, or maybe even two that may be willing to serve, we'd have an opportunity to choose between?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I can certainly make a few number of phone calls, yep.
So we would, we should be advertising for applicants now, I think. Do you agree?
I do. The only thing I'm, I'm almost thinking is, we're not gonna be able to pull our, be able to pull our committee together quite that quickly, so perhaps we may wanna leave the job open for five weeks or six weeks. Given the time of year, given storms, given weather, you know, perhaps it'd be a good idea to actually leave the job open for a little bit longer period of time. Um, and it'll give us time to get the other, um, pieces of the puzzle put into place.
Well, what about, I'd like to put an advertisement out tomorrow for the search committee and maybe close at the twenty-fifth, if we're gonna close the, um, applications for town manager on on March second. And if we have to, then we can extend it at that time, if we don't get the applicants. Brett, how do you feel about that?
Yeah, that, I mean, that seems totally reasonable to me. I think that the the idea that we can extend it if we need to gives us that sort of backdrop if if we need it, but, uh, keeping things on an acceler, as as standard but accelerated a timeline as possible, I think is going to, uh, just be prudent, given everything going on in the town.
And then if we do get the applicants, we could probably, um, approve the members by March first.
I was just trying to get a look at my calendar to see how the days fall, so we would have, you know, our next meeting will be the fifteenth, then it looks like we won't meet again till March first. So I would suspect that we would have, you know, enough, I I guess we'd have, should have enough people that would be wanting to step forward or willing to step forward in a brief period of time. I mean, would we wanna be looking at applicants on the fifteenth or the first? And the only reason I ask is, it would take a little time to set the committee up. I think Derek has a process he has to do to actually, you know, set a committee, the committee has to hire or elect a chairman and different things of that nature. So I guess that's, you know, just talking through it. You know, does that make sense? Would we actually pick the committee on the first? Or pick the committee on the fifteenth? Or or I suppose we could always meet off schedule if we need to, um.
I was just gonna say that, if we have to, then we can.
Yeah. I just don't know if the fifteenth is enough time to get give everybody at least, you know, get the word out and get a a real good cross-section of the community. It just would seem a little bit rushed two weeks, but, um, Brett's, Brett, what are your thoughts?
Well, and just one, what if we advertise from February second to February twenty-fifth? And then a point on the?
March first?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't know, what do you think, Brett?
I mean, I think it's, it's fine to have the the overlap and give people a little bit of time, more time to apply, give sort of people the standard thirty days. And then, you know, we get the committee appointed when we can get them, you know, I don't think it needs to be in in perfect lockstep. I do think that if we need to have a special meeting, we can have it, but I don't, I don't necessarily anticipate that being the case, but I, you know, Steve's right, this, that, there's a lot of work to be done in a very short period of time between, you know, getting the applications, getting the committee set up, getting the the committee into a process where they can effectively sort of score, rank, go through the applicants, and then do any vetting thereafter. I think that that's, you know, whoever applies for that's gonna have to know that, um, you know, March is gonna be a busy month for them. And as long as we set that expectation, I think we should be okay, but it's, it's obviously a lot to get done, but it's also very important work.
Right. Yeah, that's actually a good point. I I think that applicants need to be aware that this would be a very busy committee with a full schedule, a lot to be done in a relatively short period of time.
Yeah. Yep. Yeah, this is no meet once every two weeks and take two months to figure out what you're doing.
No, we've gotta get through this.
Yeah.
In short time.
Thirty-day assignment.
Okay.
Right.
So then we will put the advertisement out tomorrow for the search committee, give them to the twenty-fifth to get the applications in. And if we have to meet, um, after, uh, two or three days after that, that's fine. We can hold a special meeting.
Yep. Yep.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Oh, I was gonna say, who's raising their hand, yeah?
Yeah, Dave, Dave Ross, I just looking for a clarification for it. Uh, with everything going on in the world, I don't know if you need to clarify whether or not there'll be in-person meetings, or these will be virtual meetings, because that may dissuade individuals from applying for the search committee. And I don't know if we can even say that right now, because who knows what the world will be like in thirty days, but.
Well, we can, I would think we could go with a virtual meeting to begin with, right?
Yeah, I would think if, in the short run, again, let's assume that the committee gets formed, you know, sometime around March first, um, and there's resumes to be reviewed sometime in the next four or five days following that. Well, they'll have to meet surely thereafter anyways to form the committee. I I would say remote in the short run, but I sure would hope that by the by the end of their process, when they're deliberating and when they're going through, um, resumes and calculations of how they're ranking prospective applicants, I would hope that they would be able to meet in person, you know, at the tail end of that process.
I think it's a, it's a, I think it's a very valid and and good point, and my take is that we would just watch the data, and we can't prescribe or read the future, and we cross the bridge when we come to it, obviously, if it's safe to do so, and and that's sort of general accepted practice, then we would prefer to have people in person, and if it's not, for whatever reason, because of the data or whatever's going on, or the recommendations out of the CDC, then then we would support remote. I think we just will support whatever the world brings to us in thirty or sixty days.
And.
Sounds good to me.
Now, and then the search committee would, could, um, deliver the three final candidates, uh, around April fifth. That gives them the month of March, pretty much.
Yeah. Sounds right.
And they'd be, those would be the three finalists to the Board of Selectment on the fifth of April. Okay.
It sounds, it sounds pretty aggressive. I don't know if we'll be able to hit all those dates, but I think as long as we're cognizant of what's going on and what we're trying to achieve, uh, it certainly is a good rough draft. I served on one of the, the reason I say that is I served on our town manager search committee back in, I believe it was two thousand nine, and it we had quite a few meetings for quite a few months. So I'm not sure that we'll be able to achieve all of this on the abbreviated timetable, but I'm certainly willing to give it a try.
Well, that's good. We're all willing to give it a try, and we'll do our best to meet the the marks.
But sometimes the voice of experience, Steve, we'll see, I'm I'm with you, it's very optimistic and very aggressive.
Yes.
We can be aggressive.
Just, just to get through the the ranking process, actually took a few meetings, really, you know, for us. I I don't recall if we met twice a week or what our what our timetable was, but I, it took quite a while, so.
Yeah.
It'd be interesting.
Yeah.
Well, it depends on how many applications you get to.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Okay, let's see. So the search committee, um, five point three point three interim town manager. Do you wanna speak to that, Derek?
Uh, if I could, just briefly, um, just because I've, you know, there's been a little bit of potential change. So my resignation initially, um, went to, uh, March fourteenth, and, um, you know, I've had conversations with board members in Plymouth, and, um, I explained to them that, you know, we're, we're, we're just starting our budget process, we're just starting our warrant review process, and so um, to to their credit, they, um, are willing to, uh, effective after March fourteen, so basically, March fifteenth beyond, uh, to allow me, if the, if you all would like me to, to continue just, um, for the, uh, remaining part, weeks of March, you know, on a part-time basis, to help, um, tie up any of the loose ends relative to, um, a town meeting, the warrant, the budget review, capital, capital review, things of that nature. Um, they recognize that's a, that's a very busy time period and, um, want to assist the town in trying to, uh, help Upton, um, move that forward. Um, they did say that, though, effective April first, like they did, they would want me to be, uh, fully engaged in, uh, town Plymouth business, so uh, that's, uh, something for you to consider. The quick pro call on that would be that, like, that, um, if if they uh, needed me for a meeting here or there in Plymouth, um, then I would be able to, uh, attend those types of events prior to March fourteen. Uh, so that's for you to consider, if you, if you wanted that to take place, that would certainly delay, that have to to delay the conversation to have an interim town manager, you could probably move that agenda item to the middle part of March, um, because we'd certainly have an extended period of time. We'd better, we basically have the next eight weeks, um, of my service, so, uh, with that, I'll turn it back to the chair.
You have any comments?
Yeah, I mean, my, you know, I think getting us through and and sort of lined up to get, to get to a point where we've got the the budget finalized, the warrant closed and set up in advance of the April or in the May town meeting makes a lot of sense. Um, I think that will help us through the month of, uh, get through the month of April, um, without necessarily needing or having a lot of, um, dependency on critical town manager strategic-type leadership decisions, direction, et cetera. Um, so if we can take advantage of that, of Derek's time for an extra couple of weeks, that, that's great, and if it means um, extending some courtesy over the the preceding couple of weeks, um, to to the folks in Plymouth, that that's, that's fine, as long, you know, Derek knows, and I certainly trust Derek, and he's been and always has been a consummate professional. Uh, I trust his judgment to make sure that he's, you know, taking care of Upton first, uh, while he's here, and, um, you know, certainly, uh, manages that appropriately, but I I have no reason to think that he wouldn't, so if anything, he'll be working two jobs for longer, um, and that's gonna make his life harder, but we'll be the benefactors or the beneficiaries.
I would agree with that, because, um, we've pretty much had everything done as far as our town meeting and closing the warrant and posting everything and by April first anyways. So it would be to the end of March, Derek?
Uh, yeah, it would be, uh, March thirty-first.
So we should be in pretty good shape as far as the budget process and annual town meeting and all the posting of warrants and everything else. Steve, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I was just, once again, just looking at my calendar, just kind of visualizing what, when our meetings will be, and, you know, how this will play out, um. So Derek, I think you originally had mentioned to us it was the eleventh, but you're thinking the fourteenth is the day right now that you are planning on leaving.
Well, so, my resignation was affected March eleventh, which would have put me at a March fourteenth date in Plymouth. Um, and so what I'm saying this evening is that, you know, Plymouth is willing to work with the town of Upton Board of Selectmen, knowing that we're just starting our budget process, which is what I explained to them, and they are willing to allow me to work on a, on a part-time basis for the town of Upton to get us, again, like I explained earlier, through that process, like warrant, budget capital, things of that nature.
Okay. So I think it's, sounds good. I think we, this is something that, you know, we'll have to have constant dialogue, perhaps at every meeting, we'll just kind of review this and make sure that we're we're all on the same page and that nothing on your end changes, Derek. Um, if things ramp up and and you need to obviously devote more time to Plymouth, um, then that may change. I I think looking forward, I'm still optimistic, but at the same time, a little nervous about aggressive, how aggressive a timetable we have. So I think one thing I'd like to at least explore, uh, the last time that we needed an interim town manager, we were able to secure, um, the, uh, the talents of Bob Reed, so I'm not sure if he's still out there. I don't know if he's still in Massachusetts. I don't know if that's something that we could maybe reach out, because we're still gonna have a lapse in time. You know, at some point, we're gonna need an interim town manager, just because we're still gonna have a lapse of time to when we hire somebody, and, you know, the date that ultimately Derek, uh, leaves us. So I think that would be something, you know, in advance of next meeting on the fifteenth. That might be something we might be able to just at least see who's available, you know, should the need arise. What are our options? You know, I'd rather be maybe a little over-prepared versus being under-prepared.
No, I can agree with that.
So.
Yeah. Other than that, uh, I agree with both of you.
Okay. Do we need to take a vote on that, or do we wanna wait?
I think it's just a discussion item, so I'm not sure we have to actually, I don't think we have to actually, uh, vote that.
Okay. All right. Next thing is the town managers' report.
All right, so you guys thought this was gonna be a quick meeting, but I have a lengthy town manager's report this evening, so you're with me. Um, first thing I just want to announce is that we have a new grandmother amongst the ranks. And Sandy had a baby girl yesterday, so mom's doing well, baby's doing well, everyone's doing well, and Sandy's very happy. I told her that being a grandparent would change her world.
Yes, it will.
Congratulations.
Sandy.
Well, congratulations, Sandy.
Awesome, awesome, awesome. You know, you could hold a little picture up to the camera, so we could meet new grandchild.
She's talking, but she's on mute.
I know, and then I'll send you all one tomorrow when she's all dressed up.
Oh, my God, you're gonna dress her all up?
Oh, she's a little doll. Oh, she's a little doll.
I see a headband in our future.
A nice knit cap, right?
Yeah, sure.
There's nothing like grandkids.
That's right. Two years ago, I probably would not have included that in my town manager's report, but I have a two-year-old grandson now and he is, uh, he's the best. So I, I can appreciate grandchildren more than ever before. Uh, so that being said, just to kind of move on to general, um, town business. Um, so we had our staff meeting today and I'm happy to report that the, according to the Board of Health, the COVID cases are dropping dramatically. Uh, to the point where they're saying that, you know, they're cutting almost like virtually a half week over week. So so because of that, uh, we are going to reopen, well, as affected today, we reopened all of our municipal buildings. Uh, we will still adhere to the CDC guidance as far as, uh, protective face masks, uh, social distancing and things of that nature. Uh, but given the, the dramatic drop in cases, uh, we believe that we can continue to operate in a safe manner. So um, it was good to be able to separate ourselves, given that 30-day period with everything that was going on with Omicron. Uh, and I, I honestly believe that it, um, it, it mitigated, uh, potential transmission amongst our staff. Uh, because given the fact that we had transmission amongst our staff, so I can't imagine what are, what have been otherwise. So uh, we're, we're gonna move forward. Hopefully we don't see any new variants, uh, in the near future. Um, the third quarter taxes are due today. Um, so we are starting to see a flurry of business. It's great that we were able to reopen Town Hall today. Uh, because many of our residents, as you know, love to pay their taxes in person, uh, and get that receipt. So taxes are due today and we're starting to see an uptick in business. Uh, but at the same time, you may all get phone calls, uh, regarding the motor vehicle, uh, excise taxes. So what, what I didn't even realize, but a year ago, um, the state, when they conducted their motor vehicle valuations, uh, those valuations came lower. So our, so we may have thought that we caught a break last year with our excise taxes. Uh, that has caught up towards this year. So, uh, we are already experiencing phone calls from the residents asking why their values jumped up, um, uh, much more than in previous years. And it's because, and it has nothing to do with town side, but that the state, the way they, they conducted those valuations last year were lower than, than, than what we have this year. So we need to explain that to our residents. And so we're in the process of putting some type of material out so that we can inform the public as to what had transpired over the past, um, 12-plus months. Um, moving on, for a, a value added and savings opportunity for the town, the insurance advisory committee met last week, uh, Sandy pulled together with the IAC and with our health insurance provider. Uh, and we're able to offer a lower cost, uh, insurance plan. Uh, lower to the sense that it's, it's a reduction of 13% of what we already have for one of our plans. So we're not taking away the existing plan, we're just adding a different plan, uh, to the menu of options. Uh, again, it'll be 13% reduction in costs to our employees, which also translates into a 13% reduction on the town side as well. So as you know, we pay 75% of the premium and the town, and the employees pay 25%. So, uh, we will encourage our employees to consider this. Um, they'll save money and the town will save money as well. So, uh, great work on, uh, Sandy's part to be able to make that happen and bring that new plan to the, to the town of Upton. Uh, this past Friday, myself and a number of public safety officials led by Chief Bradley and Chief Rasheen, uh, we visited yet again the, the Grafton up in Railroad, met with their engineers to review, um, the, uh, current expansion of the railroad. So yeah, as you know, I've talked many, many times in the past that they have these silos, they've constructed a new, uh, transloading facility on site. Uh, that operation, uh, has, has not been, uh, in full works because they haven't received the sign-offs at the local level just yet. So we continue, um, to work with the railroad to make sure all of the safeguards in place. And, you know, it, it was a great job, um, by the fire department at this meeting, uh, Captain Lazar honestly did an, an amazing job just educating the railroad engineers as to what the town needs to see in order for, for us all to feel safe. Not only from a public safety standpoint, but to make sure that the residents are protected. Um, and our first responders are protected if they were to go on the site, you know, during some type of chemical event. So uh, it was, I was happy to be a part of the process just to see, um, the level of expertise that we have in our fire department and, and what they're doing for our residents to ensure safety. So, uh, we'll keep you posted on that, but, uh, we feel like we have, uh, a few more conversations and meetings to take place before we're comfortable with signing up on their airline. So, cool, so the department. Um, Chief Bradley is, uh, moving forward with the, um, the lieutenant promotion process and the sergeant promotion process. So uh, we would expect to promote two sergeants and one lieutenant over the next, uh, four to six weeks. So you'll be seeing those uh, promotion recommendations, uh, come before you, uh, within that time period. And so looking forward to some of our newest sergeants and lieutenant, um, here in town. Um, and then, uh, the fire department, given the most recent 14-inch snow, uh, fall, uh, fire department is working very closely with the DPW to make sure all our fire hydrants are being, uh, cleaned and cleared out. So uh, they can protect fire safety throughout the town. Kids at Play applications are open, um, and we will continue to keep that application period open, uh, throughout the summer months. But for those of you that talk to parents and, uh, looking for activities for their children this summer, please let them know to go on the Kids at Play aside the Recreation Commission's website, uh, and at that point they can find the application, uh, during this open enrollment period. Uh, the, the new recreation director is doing a phenomenal job, working with the Recreation Commission. In fact, they're promoting a sledding event, uh, this weekend over at Stefan's Farm. So more to come on that, but uh, look at social media, um, to try to get, you know, children out there. I guess it's, uh, it's been, uh, it's been an event that has been in the town for many, many decades. In fact, one of our employees, uh, we've never been hurt as a child growing up studying over there. So trying to bring all that back to the community. Um, some good news on the Nolton Stadium building. The door has been installed. All the finished work has been completed. Uh, we are now working with, um, the ramp company. They're projecting a 46-week time period to install the ramp. We have three different options that we're considering right now for the ramp, uh, based upon the layout. Uh, so we're going to work with public safety and public groups to choose the best option for that building. Um, and I just want to say that I know people were frustrated with the process, but, um, you know, not to make excuses, but certainly the, the, the supply chain didn't help, uh, the construction that was taking place during the course of the summer and the fall and trying to find contractors, uh, was a challenge. You know, we, we had early, like I mentioned before, we had an early quote of $15,000 to just install the, install the door. Uh, and trying to be really good stewards of our taxpayers' money, we didn't accept that. Uh, so we, um, Kelly did a good job trying to find additional contractors that were up there. We found someone to install the door for 7,500, so half the cost. So although it took longer, we saved the town and our taxpayers considerable amount of money, uh, by doing that due diligence and, um, and finding, um, individuals to do the work for the appropriate amount. So we're expecting, uh, probably by the end of March, we'll see a ramp on that building and that building will be fully accessible from our access point. Um, we received, uh, Kelly's been working with the state, received another cyber, uh, cyber security grant, which will focus on awareness and training amongst our workforce around, uh, spam and phishing attempts, things of that nature. Our town planner has submitted the expression of interest for the MVP grant. Uh, that expression of interest is focused in on Warren Street, specifically on developing a pocket park, uh, coming up with a low-impact environmental design, uh, and, uh, considering adding, adding EV charging stations uh, to a reconstructed, uh, Town Hall parking lot. So um, this expression of interest could be anything from just providing, uh, money to design this, this, this area. Uh, everything up to providing funds to construct, uh, the final build out of this area as well. So more to come on that, but um, he's doing a great job trying to seek those dollars to, to improve some of these projects rolling. And the last thing I just want to mention that, uh, having a meeting with Pat Roach today, uh, he has spoke very highly of the work of Hutter Construction over at the community center. When you go by there, you will notice that the footings are being poured. Uh, this is a very challenging time to pour concrete, given the, the low temperatures. Uh, and Pat has assured us that the, the construction company is doing a phenomenal job um, keeping warming blankets over the, the concrete, making sure the concrete doesn't freeze. Uh, and he has said that, um, you know, he's very confident that they're doing a great job. And he goes over there each and every day to ensure that, you know, we're getting a quality product. So something we shouldn't have to be worried about in the years to come, uh, by a, a prob, improper workmanship. So I was honestly very happy to him to talk so highly of Hutter Construction and the great network that they're doing. So uh, I appreciate Pat, you know, paying close attention to that project because that's a $12 million investment as you all know. Um, so that's all I have for this evening. Pending any questions, I'll turn it back to the board.
Any comments or discussion items?
There's an awful lot. There's an awful lot there. It's all good news. Thank you for the update.
Brett?
Uh, I think Sandy's raising her hand.
Oh, Sandy.
Hi, I, I'm not sure Derek probably already told you, but I just wanted to remind you that the budget books, hard copy are in the Selectmen's, um, um, conference room. So whenever you want to pick one up.
Thank you, Sandy.
Awesome. Uh, no additional, uh, comments or questions. All wonderful updates as always. Good stuff.
Well, I think that concludes the meeting then. And we got a motion to adjourn.
I would make a motion that we adjourn this evening's meeting, Stephen Mattelli and I.
That's I'm aside.
Unanimous action. All good evening.
See you, folks.
Everybody, stay safe.